Good evening, I appreciate all you coming out tonight. We've got a relatively packed agenda, but first, I'm actually gonna call on Commissioner Lohon to ask the invocation if he would.
Would bow with me please. Father, we do come to you with thankful hearts, thankful for the many blessings that we each have, the opportunities we have. We just pray that you would be with us tonight and we would make good decisions. I know we're gonna be talking about youth cancer and we just pray that any child that has cancer that you would heal them in a way that you would see fit. Just guide and direct us all in what we do and say, these things I pray in Christ's name, amen. Would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or amendments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to add two items to the agenda, making number two proclamation, childhood cancer, and item number 13, Coggins Road. And I'd also like to amend our consent to add J for union power easement.
Alright, so there's a motion to amend the agenda to add item two, which is a proclamation that will be presented on childhood cancer. Item number 13 is an item on the road closure for Coggins Road and added to 12J is an amendment for union power corporate easement. Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. I apologize, I have a lot of papers spread out up here tonight for some reason. Item number one on the agenda tonight is a retirement presentation for Devotta Beard. Is she with us this evening? Glad you could join us. I have a bio to read about you that I'm assuming somebody prepared on your behalf. Devotta began working as a program assistant for the Stanley County Health Department in June of 1997. Two years later, she moved into social services in the clerical unit where she spent 17 years providing excellent service to the staff. In October of 2016, Devotta took a position in family and children's Medicaid as a caseworker. She caught on to the casework very quickly and proved herself to be highly efficient and a valuable asset to the team. Devotta was always kind, caring, and willing to help her coworkers get work accomplished. Devotta is married to Rob Beard and they have two daughters and two grandchildren. Devotta was excited to retire to spend more time with her grandchildren. It was an emotional day for staff to see her leave, but she will be greatly missed. And we appreciate on behalf of the Commissioners, your service to the county, and I know on behalf of the Health Department and the Social Services Department that you will be greatly missed, but if you'll join us down here, we'll take a bunch of pictures. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like you to present this cloth for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County on this occasion of your retirement. We extend our sincere appreciation for the service and wish you even greater achievement and rewards in the future. Presented this ninth day of September 2019 by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners. Sorry, item number two is the proclamation for childhood cancer awareness. I believe our presenter is Ms. Martha Sue Hall.
Well, actually, I'm just the voice. I'm just the voice, but thank you Commissioners, and particularly thank you Andy for placing this on tonight's agenda. About four days ago, and I'll have to look back at Donna Reed, it was about four days ago, or five, I got a text from Donna Reed asking me if I would make sure that a proclamation got before your council, before the Commissioners tonight, and before city council. And I said, "Sure." And then she told me what it was about, and she prepared what is before you tonight, and I hope that you have it in front of you. But then she called and she said, "Would you do the presentation?" So I said, "Make sure you have some folks here if you want them here." And we have two young people right now with us. This is Tate. Tate, can you slide to the right with me a moment? This is Tate, and this is one of the children that we are praying for in this community right now, who has childhood cancer. And to his right is Maddie McCray. And Maddie is a seventh grader at West Stanley Middle School. And these children, and I'm gonna have to stand right here so that people can hear, but these are two of the children that this proclamation is for. So if you will grant me a moment, Mr. Chair, I would read this proclamation that Donna Reed has prepared, and the same thing will be presented next week before the city council. Proclamation, Tate, you wanna come with me? You can stand right there if you want to, or you can stand with me, whichever. You can stand with me, or you can stand with Maddie. They're good. Proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month, September 2019, and every year thereafter. Whereas in the past three years, at least six children who live in Stanley County have been diagnosed with cancer. Whereas childhood cancer is the number one disease-related killer of kids, of children in the United States, one in five children are terminally diagnosed. Three in five suffer life-altering impacts of treatment that significantly alter their quality of life. One in 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer before the age of 20. It's one in 285. Whereas childhood cancer is on the rise. Childhood cancers and adult cancers are different, yet we continue to use the downsized adult cancer protocols on children, on kids with many different types of devastating effects. The lack of childhood cancer research has tremendous impact to children and significant cost to society now and in the future. Whereas despite these facts, childhood cancer research is vastly and consistently underfunded. Less than 5% of the National Centers Institute's budget is solely dedicated to childhood cancer research. In 25 years, the FDA has initially approved only two drugs for childhood cancer, and half of all chemotherapies used for childhood cancers are over 25 years old. Whereas the incidence of childhood cancer is on the rise with an estimated 15,700 children diagnosed every year, that's 43 per day in the United States alone. Of those 43 children per day, seven will die. Whereas the incidence of cancer among adolescents and young adults is increasing at a greater rate than any other age group, except those over 65 years of age. The average age of death for a child with cancer is eight, causing a child to lose 70 years of expected life. Whereas many adult cancers can be diagnosed early, however, for 80% of children, cancer is already spread other parts of their body by the time it's diagnosed. Whereas the causes of most childhood cancers are unknown at the present, childhood cancer cannot be prevented. Families who are or have been in treatment work tirelessly to change these alarming statistics. Now therefore be it resolved that today, the September 9th of 2019, that Stanley County Commissioners proclaim September 19 and every year forward as childhood cancer awareness month, would make this request of you, and as I'm doing so, would thank Donna Reed. And Donna, are there other folks here in support of this tonight? If those folks that are here, you see some folks, if they would stand, I would just greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have some families here, we have some other children and other youth that are supporting these folks. So I would offer these to you and to offer this proclamation, and am humbled that Donna would call and ask me to present this on their behalf. Thank you. And it's in your hands.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I know that I have two children near Tate's age, so that age of child is near and dear to my heart. I know anybody up here would be willing to make the motion. I am gonna take the step as chairman, which is not normally heard of, but I'm gonna make the motion to pass this proclamation if there is a second. There are seconds, I'm gonna go with Commissioner Barbie. Is there any discussion or further comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. And thank you to those that worked on this. Okay, another proclamation for Eligibility Workers Month. That is gonna be Ms. Dolly Clayton.
Good evening Commissioners.
I'm sorry, I'm off my game tonight.
That's okay. So I come to you tonight to request that you pass a proclamation for Eligibility Workers Month. So some of you may be asking yourself, "Well, who are these eligibility workers that we're talking about?" Well, I want you to know that in social services, I have about 37 individuals who are enrolled that are termed as eligibility workers, and these are the folks that are determining eligibility for some of those means-tested programs, those programs that are based on your income, such as food stamps, Medicaid, special assistance, and those type programs. And so I'm requesting tonight that you recognize the work that they do. In fact, Ms. Devotta Beard, our retiree, is one of our workers, as well as the young lady sitting beside her, Ms. Jeanette Eetman, who also is retired, and she was a program administrator for the income maintenance program. And so I wanna recognize their hard work, and so I'd like to read the proclamation that you have in your packet for them. Whereas Stanley County continues to experience an unprecedented influx of individuals and families requesting public assistance services, and whereas despite ongoing stressors, including but not limited to increasing workloads and caseloads and system transitions, the staff continues to dedicate themselves to making a difference in the lives of residents through compassion, collaboration, and the dissemination of information, and whereas eligibility workers support Stanley County residents struggling to obtain such basic needs as food, shelter, healthcare, and transportation, and whereas eligibility workers effectively fulfill the main mission of the human services profession by enhancing human well-being and helping to meet the basic needs of Stanley County residents, and whereas on a daily basis, the eligibility workers interact and assist individuals from various socio-economic, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds, often under adverse conditions and in high-stress situations, and whereas eligibility workers issue benefits for multiple public assistance programs, including food and nutrition services, Medicaid, and cash assistance, and provide program support through program integrity, and whereas eligibility staff also identifies and refers clients in need of other social, behavioral, mental health, substance abuse, or other services to other department staff, ensuring that accurate benefits are issued and providing programmatic training and employment assistance to help customers reach self-sufficiency. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Stanley County's eligibility workers, we, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Eligibility Workers Month in Stanley County, North Carolina, and call upon all residents to recognize Stanley County eligibility staff for the significant difference they make in the lives of needy families and individuals, aged adults, foster children, and families in transition. So I request respectfully that you pass this proclamation to recognize the hard work of those staff.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Any questions? It was the pleasure of the board. Motion by Commissioner Jordan to approve the proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Item four is the 2018 Stanley County Community Child Protection Team Report. Again, Ms. Clayton. Ms. Beard, if you want the box for your... Sorry, I didn't give it to you.
So in your packet, you have the 2018 Stanley County Community Child Protection Team Report, as well as this PowerPoint presentation that I'm gonna provide to you tonight. First off, I just wanna give you a little bit of history about the Community Child Protection Team. So this particular team was created in 1991 to fulfill the citizen review panel requirements that were authorized by the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act. The purpose of this committee is to identify any deficiencies in child welfare resources and services, and to advocate for any system changes that are needed. Another purpose is to promote child welfare within the county and increase public awareness about the issue of child abuse and neglect in the community. It's also to assist a local health director in the protection of children and to provide a report to you, the Board of Commissioners. As part of the requirements for this particular program is that DSS does provide case information and community partners are requested to share information about services and programs which may benefit the family. Just to note, for this particular group, the Community Child Protection Team and the second group, the Child Fatality Review Team, which you will hear from Mr. Jenkins later, actually meet together because it's basically the same group of people who work together to work on this issue. One of the things that's required as a part of this particular program is that cases must review child deaths where there was, as suspected, abuse or neglect and CPS was involved within the past 12 months prior to the death of a child. We're also required to review substantiated cases of abuse and cases determined to be in need of services or those with reports of neglect. The team member within the group makes a request for a case to be reviewed to gather additional information about additional resources that may be in the community. So for instance, we might have a case with a small child and where the staff member that's working with that particular family is struggling to identify additional resources for that particular family, and therefore they'll bring the case to the Community Child Protection Team and present the case along with the circumstances that brought them to the attention of the Department of Social Services, and also tell what types of services are already being put in place for that particular child, and then following that, ask for additional suggestions or other community resource information that may be beneficial for this particular family. So like I said, there's a case presentation, the staff introduced a case, their involvement, and the reason they're requesting the review, then the social worker will present the case, and then there's some team discussion and any questions that might come up as a result of the involvement and what is presented. Any recommendations are requested, and then there's community collaboration, and then there are suggestions typically for law or policy changes. As a result, there may be new initiatives that are established, and we may develop additional local activities to increase awareness around a particular issue. As is required, we do provide an annual report to the Board of Commissioners and the Health and Human Services Board, along with any recommendations for system improvements or resources, and then we also are required to provide that report to the North Carolina Division of Social Services. The next two slides are kinda busy, but I wanted to give you a good framework of how this particular program works. You'll see in the middle box, there are the local teams, and so the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team are there together at the top, and because we work as a blended team in Stanley County, and that also happens in a majority of other counties as well. And you'll see that the local DSS Director and the local DS Board receive reports, as well as the local health director and the local health board. In our particular case, that's the Consolidated Human Services Board, and so they receive both reports. And then any recommendations that are made are then forwarded to the Board of Commissioners. And then the second slide provides you with a little bit more detailed information to sort of see how we're really interrelated. We reviewed 10 cases this past year, in the year of 2018. Of those, eight cases were child fatalities. There were two cases that were reviewed that the social services was working in. None of the cases that were reviewed as child fatalities during the 2018 session were cases that were identified as being involved with social services in the past 12 months prior to the incident that occurred. Just to let you know, in 2018, we reviewed deaths that occurred in the quarter period of the previous year, so we would be reviewing deaths that occurred actually in 2017. This year, when we review cases, we're reviewing cases that occurred in 2018 during the quarterly period that were being reviewed. You have any questions?
Dolly, I do have a question. Shows you had 10 cases and there were eight fatalities.
There were eight fatalities in 2017, and Mr. Jenkins will provide you with more detail about those particular cases related to what the causes of death were in some of those cases.
So there were eight children under the age of 18?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You have any other questions?
I don't think so. No action from us.
No action required. Thank you so much.
Item number five on the agenda tonight is the 2018 Child Fatality Team Report that was just referenced. Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Child Fatality Prevention Team Review 2018, we'll be reviewing fatalities from 2017. I know this is an annual presentation, so this information will be familiar to several of you and may be new for some of you as well. We are statutorily required to provide this update every year, so just bear with me. This was established, the Child Fatality Team was established in 1993 by the General Assembly, and we confidentially review all child fatalities of children under the age of 18 and reside in Stanley County. Our ultimate goal is to reduce the rate of child deaths, and we do this through identifying deficiencies, carrying out recommendations for change, and promoting understanding the causes of child deaths. So our team is made up of representatives of public and non-public agencies in the community. We have the Health Department represented, law enforcement, guardian malitum, emergency management, many of our local providers and other providers of services to children and their families. So we have a very diverse team that makes up this group, and that's why we can have some very informative discussions and make very positive recommendations on addressing some of the issues in our community. So our meetings are quarterly, normally February, May, August, and November. We do have joint meetings, as Ms. Clayton alluded to, with the Stanley County Community Child Protection Team. And there are multiple community agencies, as I mentioned earlier, that are represented. So what happens with our recommendations? Well, team recommendations are captured, we have a team coordinator that's set up through statutes that's required to keep minutes and keep up with any information shared and share recommendations to the state level. All that comes through a report, and as I mentioned, sends it up to the state for recommendation. We do present this to our Consolidated Board, as well as our Commissioners annually. So some of the successes of this in North Carolina have been booster infant car seat laws, bicycle helmet laws, penalties for speeding in school zone, smoke detector and carbon monoxide requirements, graduated driver's licensing program, where once folks graduate from the program at 16, they're more educated on defensive driving, and reduction in infant mortality through progesterone, 17P distribution, safe sleep campaigns, and breastfeeding promotion. And the reason I wanted to share this graph is just to indicate the child deaths in North Carolina, it's an annual report, this is from 92 to 2016, obviously you can see a decline in a lot of these efforts that have made and impacted child and infant mortality deaths in North Carolina. And it is divided by race, ethnicity, age, and it is birth to 17 years of age. So it's a good program, it's worked well for us, and still a lot of work to do, but it has made an impact. So child death reviews and recommendations, as Ms. Clayton mentioned before, there were eight child deaths reviewed that occurred in 2017, and the recommendations are as follows: increase education to younger children, body safety, Butterfly House is a big advocate for that, continue to educate mothers that marijuana use is not safe during pregnancy, ensure caregivers are trained in CPR specifically to infants or child that are high-risk for cardiac arrest, continue to educate parents and caregivers on proper handwashing, and importance of keeping newborns away from sick people due to no vaccinations through hospital discharge, and education, newborn well checks, et cetera. Contact is made with the Chief Medical Officer regarding responsibility of providers to inquire about pregnancy of childbearing women prior to prescribing a known teratogen, which is a drug capable of causing harm to a fetus. A lot of these recommendations will come from reviews of the deaths that we had ever associated with 2017. Our team involvement with local partners include mock car crashes, car safety inspection points, safe-proofing homes, bicycle safety, water boating safety, smoke alarm, canvassing event, and many media messaging and awareness programs. And that is it for our brief presentation this evening. Any questions or comments?
Any questions from the board? I don't believe so. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
I believe item number six on the agenda is yours as well.
Yes, sir. I presume you all have the recommendations for appointments that we're bringing to you tonight from the Child Fatality Prevention Team. We went back with our team coordinator, found several appointments that had not historically been officially recommended by our Commissioners. If you do not have those in front of you, I'll be happy to read those off at this time.
I think this...
Yes, sir. And basically, it's a list of eight.
Okay. They're all on the action sheet, first page of that agenda section as well.
And it may be a little bit easier to read if you have your regular agenda sheet here. So we are asking for approval of the appointments that are being recommended from our Fatality Prevention Team.
It was the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan. I move that we appoint as presented in our packet. Ron Simpson, Judy Ross, Jonathan Cranford, Michael Smith, Tammy Albertson, Michael Rort, Amy L. Amy L., Adam Palmer.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Morgan to appoint the presented candidates from the board. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you Chairman, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda tonight is the Rural Communities Opioid Response Program. Ms. Jennifer Leighton.
Good evening. Just bearing one moment. So I presented to you all, I think in, may have been April. So it's been a while and we were hopeful that we would receive this grant and we were notified August 8th and it's quite an honor for our community to receive this grant. I would like to point out that we were only one of three health departments in the nation that were awarded this grant and that's pretty significant. The, thank you. It's pretty exciting. We're standing among universities and medical centers, which I think says a lot about our community and you should all be very proud of that. So I'm going to go through the budget detailed, but you have received a copy of that in your packet beforehand and you can, the detailed budget you have a copy of has an explanation on the side, justification, what those items are used for and some have calculations. This gave me a lot of heartburn to make sure we were under a million dollars. We could not be a penny over. If we were a penny over, we would have been tossed in the trash. So we had to be very, very close in our numbers. So for equipment and office supplies, we are purchasing two vehicles for our partner agencies that use those vehicles to transport folks to and from appropriate care, to and from programming, to and from job training, education and things of that nature for $83,850. We're purchasing a laptop and a printer as well as Microsoft Office software for a partner agency because they're going to have to collect data for us as well as draft communications related to this grant. We're purchasing printer paper and printer cartridges and on the equipment and office supplies total $90,224. And this is for all three years, by the way. This is not annually, this is all three years. For medical services and supplies, and this is one of the things I'm most excited about, we really pursued this grant hard because we can provide behavioral health services and behavioral health medications for uninsured men and women in this community. And it was our goal, our team's goal, to make sure that almost half of the budget went to these services because this is what folks in our community need the most. And so we are required to provide naloxone in the community and so we're estimating about 120 units per year and that's paired with CPR and naloxone administration training, drug testing kits that are used with our buyer counselor as well as our sober living house to make sure folks are staying on the course. Our behavioral health services, and again, that's where that's an intensive behavioral health program, counseling services provided outpatient or provided to someone after they've completed a treatment program and that's $306,560. And the behavioral health prescriptions include medications as a treatment prescription, so Suboxone as well as anti-anxiety medications and antidepressant medications because they're the most commonly dual diagnosis you'll see among behavioral health. And that totals $440,042.54. So for personnel and travel, we are funding a full-time staff person for Gateway of Hope Addiction Recovery Center. We are also funding a full-time staff person for Wheels Place. Both of these organizations provide critically important services. If we don't have these folks navigating folks to care, providing them support when they complete treatment and helping them with, again, job training, job placement, getting back into the community, enrichment programs, we won't see much benefit from our program. So we're supporting their staff. We're also claiming a little bit of my time to implement the grant, oversee the grant over the course of the next three years, an average of three hours a week, just to collect data and communicate with the federal government. We've also included airfare, car rental, lodging and per diem because we are required by HERSA to send two staff people once per year for two to three days for updates and training with the federal government and also opportunities for us to communicate with other organizations across the country on their projects and share information. And so we have to do that again, once per year over the next three years and our first trip will be in March. But that totals $362,906.07. And contractually, we are required by this grant to provide training to local medical professionals, so nurse practitioners, primary physicians. Also, we can provide training to anyone in the community that may be a point of entry into treatment related to screening. So S-BERT is screening, brief intervention and refer to treatment and that is a state and federal endorsed training. We are going to partner with Charlotte AHEC to provide a billing and coding training specifically related to behavioral health and that is what the federal government also wanted to see because they have a behavioral health unit, they can do this much more efficiently than we can. We are going to provide some Lock Your Meds ads at the theater and the radio station to continue to educate the community about the importance of proper medication disposal and storage. And we are going to reimburse some staff for mileage based on what their programs require and that totals $47,668. And then we have other. So these things don't really fit in other categories. So we've allocated $100 a month over the next three years for various trainings, so waters and water and light snacks at various trainings. We are going to cover the fuel for those vehicles we're going to purchase. We are also going to do some repairs to three sober homes located in Locust, North Carolina and that was pre-approved by the federal government so that they have a safe place to live. If they do not, if these repairs are not made, the homes may not be safe. We are also going to cover that vehicle insurance for both of those vehicles and that totals So here are the activities. We were required, the reason I really liked this grant was because it was comprehensive. We were required to explain how we were going to address prevention, treatment and recovery. And so for prevention, we are implementing a CPR and naloxone trainings that's being done by Wheels Place currently and that will continue on. Upon completion, people can receive a naloxone kit if they would like. We're going to expand our existing prevention coalition to incorporate a youth council component so we have youth engaged. We're going to expand some of our campaigns and messaging programs to continue that prevention education with the community. And recovery messaging is critically important so that we're all using the same language, the same terminology and moving in the right direction. One of the big challenges that our community has had is we don't have a comprehensive guide of resources here in the community, whether it's related to behavioral health or human services. And we are going to be dedicating quite a bit of time to filter through all those so we don't just have an agency location and phone number, but we have an explanation of what kind of materials you're going to need before you get there, which may be income, it may be medical records, it may be, you know, referral paperwork, things like that. We will develop the Charlotte AHEC training that I mentioned. We'll continue to train our local medical professionals on the S-BERT screening. We'll continue to educate our local physicians on the STOP Act as well so they're aware that they have to be cautious when they're prescribing pain medications. We're going to be implementing the Project Lazarus Toolkit and also sharing that with the physicians. We'll be expanding that reach. And we're really, really wanting to develop a more consistent referral process. It's been a huge challenge in this community. It's not consistent among agencies and so we want to create one that's very consistent that we all can replicate and use the same forms and the same screening tools so that we are being more consistent and people are getting where they need to go. We're assisting one of our partner agencies in developing a safer syringe initiative and we are also working on getting one physician in our community CHAMP certified and CHAMP certified means this physician is able to treat hepatitis C positive patients in this community. As it stands right now, anyone that's hepatitis C positive goes to Charlotte or they're referred to Charlotte and it's very difficult for them to get there and get care. So we're working on that as well. For the treatment side of things, we promised the federal government we would at least have one physician here in our community certified to serve 30 patients with medication assisted treatment. We guaranteed one physician so that we could ensure that best practices are followed and they're following the highest ethical standards. We're going to offer our trainings for MAP providers regarding those best practices to make sure we're all adhering to the same practices. We are also been tasked by the federal government to develop a substance use disorder provider recruitment and retention plan. The nice thing is they're providing us some technical assistance because we do have a lot of challenges in rural communities attracting those specialists and so they've got some incentives to attract folks to our community. We want to train providers to screen for substance use disorders with the S-BERT screening I mentioned before. We want to continue to strengthen our detox and treatment network. Our partners have a strong network, we want to make sure that that stays strong and we still have links to get folks to care quickly. Providing transportation to and from care is critically important, it's the largest barrier in this community. And again, linking uninsured men and women to additional human services, so not just treatment, but also shelter, housing, food, clothing, educational opportunities. Charlotte AHEC is also going to develop that billing and coding training I mentioned. We're also going to help train our first responders, law enforcement, fire, EMS on that referral process. So if they engage with someone that needs to be referred, they are using the same models and the same methods that we are. We're going to continue using that recovery messaging with our first responders and we also are going to continue to bring crisis intervention training to local law enforcement as they're bringing on new staff. We want to make sure they're being trained to use the same language and the same responses and the same systems. And for recovery, so you'll see some duplication of activities. I double-checked with HERSA when we were writing the application, they said that's normal, that's okay. So again, that comprehensive guide development, navigation of behavioral health services, linking these men and women to additional human services, providing the transportation to care, providing wellness recovery action plan classes. This is where folks learn how to, sort of, it's a planning where they learn how to, if you hit a speed bump, this is how I'm going to deal with it. It's kind of like when you're talking to your kids about going to school, like, okay, if we hit a speed bump in the hallway, what are we going to do? We're going to go around the barrier, right? So it's kind of like that. Whole list of recovery programming, peer support group development, this has been really successful in surrounding counties, we want to replicate that. Recovery support groups for families, those are starting to pop up, we want to include that in our comprehensive guide. We also want to continue to expand current sober housing and we would like to coordinate group sessions in that sober housing by a certified substance abuse counselor and that is the staff person that's being supported by this grant. We're going to provide those AA meetings in sober housing, we're providing job training opportunities to men in sober housing and I would also like to mention that we did receive a letter of support from Congressman Hudson's office. He sent it directly to the federal office and we were very, very honored by that and he does have a representative here tonight, so I just wanted to mention that as well. Any questions?
Board, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got one question.
Yes.
How many new positions are we going to have to hire for this?
No new positions for the county.
So we'd be able to cover their jobs? They're going to be, I mean, it has to be full-time, right? I mean, or is this going to be something that we can work between our president employees?
Mm-hmm. So the really interesting thing about this grant, and it's hard to wrap everybody's brains around, is we're shifting the responsibility of this work from the county shouldering the most of the work to the community and that's been our goal for the last five years. We want it to be shared responsibility and the reason being is because it's more sustainable. If we were to increase services in the health department or another department in the county, we'd have to find continual funding to support that. This grant's not going to require that. So that's another benefit to sort of how we've designed our project.
I've got one last thing.
Yes.
You said we had three houses in Locust that we were going to have to?
We currently have, see, this is the other great thing, it's a partner agency, so it's a freestanding nonprofit. They have one currently and under this project, they're planning to open two additional houses. The only funding in our budget that's been approved by HERSA to cover any of those expenses are those repairs. We've asked our partner agency that if there are other needs, that we'll help go find smaller grants to help fill those needs or we'd really like to partner with maybe some local churches to, youth groups to come in and do some repairs, things like that, so that again, we're having that shared responsibility.
Yeah, I was hoping the owner would help out on that.
I'm sure, I'm sure. And if you wanted more details, the gentleman who coordinates that, Wade Larry, he's back there in the back, so he could give you a lot of details.
County Manager Lucas?
I was just going to say to the board that the majority of this, the county is simply the fiduciary agent of this grant. Money's coming in, we're having to account for it, having to make sure that the partner agencies that we'll have contracts with, because we're not just going to give them this money without a contract, we need to be able to hold them accountable for outcomes associated with the grant, their performance, but they'll have the contracts, but essentially we're going to be managing contracts. This isn't, you're not adding, you're not adding to the county department necessarily, we're contracted with partner agencies and we're just simply the fiduciary agent for those dollars. But that helps try to explain sort of what our role will be.
And if it's, and I was discussing with Commissioner Jordan, it seems confusing because if you look at the budget and look at the activities, the budget doesn't fund all the activities and again, it's because a lot of it's just time, people's time, they're already doing a lot of this work, we're just expanding their work. So it's not necessarily adding an additional cost, which is really nice. We were very strategic.
Mr. Jordan, did you have comments? Any other comments, questions? And it was the pleasure of the board for the... Motion by Commissioner Jordan to approve the budget amendment for acceptance of the funds. A second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. County Manager Lucas?
And just, you may note that that's only 314, you're only recognizing the funds that are going through June 30th of this year. Subsequent year budgets will include the dollars for the next three-year part of this
Item number eight, fiscal year 2021 Transportation Program Application. Mr. Schank?
Good evening. Just real quickly, I want to introduce myself. I'm Randy Schank. I know a couple of you guys, I know Bill and a couple of you, but I'm new to Stanley County. I'm currently the Transit Director for SCUSA, for Public Transportation here, and just a quick, brief introduction of myself here. Well, glad to see you guys. What I'm here for is to represent the Public Transportation Division, you know it as SCUSA, and I'm seeking your approval in securing funds through the Community Transportation Program Grant 5311 for fiscal year 21. I know you guys have a packet in your agenda there. This hearing that is going to fulfill DOT requirements for a public hearing notice and just to let you know, I was required to also publish this in both, you know, various locations. I published the notice in both Spanish and in English in various locations, including here in the Commons, at the SCUSA office, at the Aggregative Center. Once again, we did put it in the newspaper, put it on Facebook and we actually posted it on each of our vehicles. The grant that I'm seeking is again for fiscal year 21 and the details, like I said, are outlined in your agenda packet. The total project, if you can look at the numbers in there, I'm actually looking for or to seek approval for, to seek $240,633 to cover an administrative grant. The capital portion of it, where I will be seeking to purchase vehicles or other capital items will be $196,050 and the total project amount is $436,683. For us, what does that mean in Stanley County? On a local share from the administrative portion, we would be required to pony up or bring up 15%, which is $36,096. And on the capital side, we would be required only to produce 10%, which is $19,605 for a total amount of $55,701. So again, the total project amount is $436,683, but Stanley County will be responsible for What I plan to do with the grants on the administrative side, that would cover for fiscal year 21 would cover four full-time, well, three full-time salaries and one part-time salary. It would also cover vehicle insurance for the entire fleet, some advertising costs, some travel costs and some other minor details like drug testing, required DOT drug testing and that sort of thing. On the capital side, what I'll be looking for in fiscal year 21 is to purchase three new vehicles and the current plans are for 22-foot LTVs or the light transit vehicles and within that capital cost will be the amount required to put the SCUSA lettering on the side of the vans.
Are there any questions from board members? If not, I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the DOT funding? For or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any questions or comments from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lawhan?
I'd like to submit a motion to approve the resolution to apply and receive fiscal year 2021 Community Transportation Program Funds for the Transportation Department.
Motion by Commissioner... Motion by Commissioner Lohon to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say one thing about Randy, welcome back to Stanley County. He lives in Stanley County, has lived in Stanley County, and has driven to Charlotte for what, over 35 years?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. So glad your commute's not as quite as difficult as it has been.
I enjoyed my five-minute commute.
Item number nine is Economic Development Incentive Grant. Presenter Candice Louter, I had to look twice.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight to request your support of a business development grant between existing employer located in Norwood. The employer plans to invest approximately $2 million in new equipment to meet current and forecasted demand. This expansion will create 10 new jobs. So tonight, we're requesting you conduct a public hearing for the grant, and if it's the pleasure of the board, approve a business development grant, which entails 60% tax rebate on the new investment for five years. The town of Norwood did take action to support the grant at that level last week.
Thank you, Ms. Louter. Are there any questions from the board? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the public incentive grant? Or or against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now, are there any questions from the board? If not, we'll seek a motion. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Morgan.
I move the way of approve the property tax incentive grant, 60% for five years, associated with investment of $2 million and the creation of 10 new jobs.
Thank you. Motion on the floor to approve the incentive grant, 60% for five years, for an investment of $2 million and the creation of 10 new jobs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is Ms. Wehmhoff, the Capital Purchase of Service Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to tell you about the NC DOT 5310 Capital Purchase of Service Grant that our department is applying for. This grant would expand services, transportation services for older adults that are 65 and older, where we have gaps currently. Currently, this is our sixth year, and, excuse me, this is our sixth year in applying for this grant, and previously, we have been successful in acquiring the grant, and we've used those funds to provide life-sustaining and medically necessary trips to dialysis, to doctor's offices, medical appointments, to the Care Cafe, which is an adult daycare respite center, and to the nutrition sites. The grant is for $60,000, $48,000 of that is federal, $6,000 is state, and the other $6,000 is county money, but the nice thing is that the home and community care block grant funds will pay for that 6%. So basically, the county really doesn't have to put in any money. And it's also a win-win in that we receive the grant, then we pay SCUSA to provide the Anyway, my grant's very similar to Mr. Shank's, although in DOT terms, it's a 5310, where his is a 5311. But we do require a public hearing, I have to have your approval to apply for the grant with the resolution that I believe is attached. They're very similar.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Or or against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there any discussion or a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and the application for funding for the public, and that's it.
Motion by Commissioner Almond, we have a second by Commissioner Barbie, to approve the resolution and application as it's presented in here. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11 tonight is voluntary agricultural district applications, Ms. Lori Ivy, County Extension Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and staff. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Volunteer Ag District Board, which met on August the 14th for their meeting, and during that meeting, they approved volunteer ag district applications for Nelson Tally totaling 398.25 acres, Shelley and Lucinda Smith totaling 277.35 acres, and Barry Evans McSwain totaling 1,146.47 acres. This comes as a recommendation from the Volunteer Ag District Board and needs approval.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Are there any questions from board members? If not, we'll seek a motion to approve the voluntary ag district application. Commissioner Lohon.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those partial land ownership notes.
Motion from Commissioner Lohon to approve the applications, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
While I'm at the podium, can I do just a quick plug for our ag tour this Thursday? I think we have Mr. Barbie and Mr. Farr register, we'd love to have everyone. Our ag tour is Thursday, it's open to the public, and we ask that folks register. We'll visit Thomas Family Farm in Richfield, John Pickler's farm, we're actually going to soybean and cotton fields on Tom Road, and our third stop was supposed to be Stanley County Livestock Market. The market, the feeder calf sale scheduled for this week has been postponed due to high temperatures here and high temperatures in the Midwest. For those of you that aren't familiar with the livestock market, the feeder calves, we're, I think, the largest in the state for feeder calf sales, and most of those feeder calves are bought by Midwest buyers who are also having a heat wave, so they felt that it would be best to schedule a week when the temperatures were a little lower and less stress on the cattle, therefore, we would have more buyers. So our hope is to visit a cattle farm in lieu of the livestock market, and lunch will be provided by Carolina Farm Credit. So I encourage all of you to attend, we'd love to have everyone, just let me know or call our office.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Item number 12 is a North Carolina DOT Resolution Supporting the Utilization of High-Impact Low-Cost Funding. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet, there's a resolution that I was asked to place on the board's agenda for consideration by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division 10, engineer, that would utilize high-impact, low-cost funding to construct a roundabout at the intersection of NC 205 and the big lick, Liberty Hill Church Road intersection is part of, and this is really related to the Blue Sky. It's not completely associated with the Blue Sky project, there's, but they're, it's related, and they're going to do this, a project to improve this intersection regardless of Blue Sky, but one of the, one of the areas that needs to be improved as part of Blue Sky is this intersection. And so they have asked for the board's consideration of this resolution so they can move this forward, so they can utilize funding or try to access funding through the high-impact, low-cost money that's been set aside by the State Department of Transportation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Manager?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas, has any other options been looked at instead of just a traffic circle?
I do not know the answer to that question, I'd be more than happy to answer or get it, ask Mark. He simply asked us to, asked me to place this on your agenda for consideration for your, for your support of this resolution. He didn't, we didn't, I didn't get into whether or not they had, what other options they had to do.
The reason I'm asking is that at least two times a day, that is a very busy intersection, and with Project Blue Sky being added too, I'd rather see a stoplight put there. I believe that a traffic circle is probably not going to be the best solution to that traffic, because you're going to have to stop anyway, and it's going to take a lot more property. So I would rather see a stoplight if it's any possible to put that there instead of a traffic circle.
Any other questions or comments? Do we know if it's a time-sensitive resolution?
I mean, you know, I could, I can certainly get the answer to that question in the board, I know we're going to have a special meeting on September 23rd, we could simply add that to that meeting agenda to take action on this, once I have additional questions answered related to whether or not they've looked at other options to include a stoplight. I'd be more than happy to try to get those answers, I don't, I don't know if two weeks is going to make, you know, I don't think it's that urgent. Be more than happy to, if you all want to table it and ask me to ask those questions and be able to bring it back up to the 23rd, I would like to try to resolve it one way or another, month of September, if we could.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Morgan.
Has the public out, have they had any voice out in O'Bur for this, whether they wanted or preferred one over the other?
Yeah, I don't, I can't tell you, I mean, DOT is its own organization, and you know, we certainly, they want our support, they don't need our, I mean, technically don't need our support, they can go, you know, they put roundabouts on the connector, no one, no one really asked our opinion on that either, so, so it's not, it's not necessarily our, they want our support, it helps them with trying to get access to these funds, but they don't necess, I mean, they have, I mean, if they wanted to move forward with this, they could do it without, without our approval. But I'll be, you know, so I don't believe there's been any type of public hearing. Vice Chairman Morgan.
Commissioner Jordan. I'm on the Triple RPO Board, and Commissioner Barbie, I'm kind of with you in the fact that I'm not a real big fan of traffic circles. I don't like them in this country or any other country I've ever been in. However, I think what County Manager Andy said was kind of spot-on, they're going to do it how they want to do it regardless of what we want. The math behind traffic circles that was explained to me in one of our meetings was typical intersection, actually 32 points of collision, traffic circle at most has eight. It cuts the chance of an accident down by 75% just by existing. So I find it inconvenient, because I'm never going to get a green light, I'm always going to have to slow down at least just about stop. But I think they're probably where DOT is going for a lot of stuff, I think we're just going to have to suck it up, because we don't really have a choice as to what they put in there. I just don't have to like it either, but I just wanted to, but you know, that's probably what their plan is for about everything. Well, I agree with you that point too, but not only is it going to be maybe a little safer, but it's going to, the aggravation and the inconvenience is going to be high, especially when we start adding those large trucks that's going to be coming through there. I would prefer to postpone this or table it till we could get some other answers, at least the DOT can explain why.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to table it till September 23rd.
A motion to table on the floor, is there a second? No second, so that motion does not move forward. Is there an alternative motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Asher.
Commissioner Almond.
I'd make a motion that we approve the North Carolina Department of Transportation Resolution Supporting the Utilization of High-Impact Low-Cost Funding.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion?
I just make a comment that I'm not in favor of these circles as well, but if we don't really have any say-so in it, then might as well go, I mean, I don't see why tabling it.
You don't.
Yeah, bringing it back up wouldn't make a difference.
County Manager Lucas.
If you don't support the resolution, then they may, that may impact their ability to get these funds. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I really don't know the answer, they want our support because they want, they want to be able to demonstrate to the state board that, hey, the county commissioners support this. So if you don't support it, it could, potentially could have some impact on whether or not they can access these funds. Will they still build a roundabout there, possibly with another source of funding? I don't, I don't know, and mainly, I think it speaks to Commissioner Jordan's point of they're, they're, on paper, because of the points of contact, they're considered safer. So, you know, I don't know the data out on the connector, but those two intersections had a tremendous number of crashes, in fact, I think some of them fairly serious before they put those roundabouts in there, and I'm not aware of any accidents that have occurred, you know, at those roundabouts since that time. So from a safety perspective, they seem to do the job, whether they're convenient and how they, you know, whether folks like them or not is another story, but, so I don't want to say that, you know, having, not supporting this resolution will, you don't have a choice, I mean, if you guys don't support this resolution, will it impact their ability to get these fundings? I really don't know the answer to that question, it could have some. So I just want to make sure that's, that's clear.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Farr.
In the aspect of all the years that I drove as a wrecker, whenever there were wrecks at stoplights, everybody had the green light. Nobody had a red light every time. If there were no witnesses, then your insurance followed it out. With the roundabouts, there's only one person that can be in the wrong.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries six to one. Item, what did we make, item 12? Item 12 is the consent agenda, are there any? Okay. Sorry, my counting skills wear off tonight. Item number 12 is going to be the Coggins Road Project. Item number 12. 13. Oh, I've said it wrong every time. 13 is the Coggins Road Project. Presenter, Mr. Will Taylor, I believe.
Yes, sir. And I'm here representing Culp Lumber Company, which has requested the closure of Coggins Road, and just to refresh your memory, we were here back in February and March seeking the closure of this road, which is located partially within the town limits of New London and partially under just the jurisdiction of the county. Culp Lumber owns the land on both sides of the road and is hoping to expand their facility across the road and build a new entrance on Highway 52 that would enable them to reroute all the truck traffic going to their plant along Highway 52 rather than through the town of New London. This also has the support of the only other property owner along this section of road, J.T. Russell and Sons. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has surrendered its maintenance rights to the road. The town of New London voted last week to close the portion of the road that's within its town limits. We're asking at this time for... We're asking at this time for you to vote to close the portion of the road that's under the county's jurisdiction. And if you choose to do so, then over the next few months, the Department of Transportation will basically block off that section of the road, and Culp Lumber plans to begin pursuing its expansion and new entrance on Highway fifty-two.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Not, is there a motion to prove, to approve the order of closing? Motion by Commissioner Lohon, a second by Commissioner Jordan, I believe, to approve the order for closing the road. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you. Now, the consent agenda that I've been trying to get to for a while now. Item fourteen, I believe, all right. Is the consent agenda, are there any questions about the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Almond, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Nobody signed up for public comment. I know there's quite a few folks still here, so is there anybody that wishes to speak during public comment? All right. We do allow speakers three minutes for public comment.
Thank you, sir. My name is Angela Laws. I'm a county resident, and I also have started a local animal rescue in two thousand and nineteen. The name of my rescue is Killer Kitties Rescue. And I've been working with, partnering with Stanley County Animal Control, and I just wanted to share with the Commissioners tonight that my experience in working with those folks down there at Animal Control has been a positive one. They are very interested in working with rescues under conditions of mutual respect. The approval of the rescue coordinator by the board in two thousand and eighteen has decreased the euthanasia rate there already, and now rescues are coming in because they're seeing that we have a rescue coordinator at that shelter, and that is a benefit to Stanley County because they are seeing that it's improving the perception of that shelter. I know there's been some social media lately that has talked about bad experiences at the shelter and that sometimes this is an issue. I just wanted to come up tonight and share that that, as a rescue, has not been my issue in my experience at the shelter. I've also partnered with a couple other local rescues and some rescues from outside our county this summer. And we had a meeting with David Jenkins and David Azell, who have both expressed their interest in continuing to work with rescues inside and outside of the county. And we're just hoping to continue those positive relationships moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laws. Is there anybody else to speak for public comment? Not, we'll go to board comments and announcements. We'll start down here with Commissioner Fur this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one thing. We've had some meetings with the senior citizens, services, and Ms. Becky Wehmhoff. And I've come to the conclusion that I've started giving twenty-five-dollar gift cards to the ones that deliver meals on wheels. I found out that they do not get any kinda revenue for that that comes out of their pocket their times, and I'm just trying to give a little bit back. I believe there is four districts. Four sites. I'm trying to start, I'm gonna start allowing or allotting four of every month to, for you to see fit any way you want to give them out, and I thank you for the letter that I've got. But I just wanna say I thank you for all the work that y'all do.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. Commissioner Almond?
Yes, sir. Since our last meeting, I had a library board meeting, and two quick announcements. They're starting a book club the last Wednesday of each month at one o'clock. And they're also, their book of the month is Hillbilly Elegy. I told them I would announce that, so if you guys are interested. Also, since our last meeting, I had a Central Line of Council of Governments meeting, and coincidentally, Brad Penovich was the guest speaker with the hurricane going on, and we talked about Doppler radar accessibility in rural areas, kind of important issue. And that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Lohon?
Tag on just a little bit about the adoptions at the animal control location. I recently recorded the radio kinda updating things that were going on in the county statistics, and I was completely blown away by the adoption rate of the dogs, I believe it was dogs. It increased during the period of time that I gave the statistics, and I wished to have it with me tonight, but I don't. But I do remember it had increased by over seven hundred percent versus the same period last year. That is outstanding, which means there's a lot more dogs that are alive because of that adoption rate. And it may be because of the adoption coordinator and the other folks that work there at the shelter, but I am very pleased to see that number increase by the percentage that it did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohon. Commissioner Jordan?
I wanted to just take a moment and extend my thanks to Jennifer Layton and all the team that helped her. I am, myself and Commissioner Barbie also serve on the Consolidated Board of Health. So we were privy to the very first presentation that Jennifer Layton got to give when she found out there was a million dollars at stake that she could spend any way she wanted to, to fight drugs with hardly any leash on her. She just begged to be let go and fight this problem. And she literally jumped around the room. I mean, she just could not contain herself, was so excited to go get the opportunity to fight for this money. And then the day when she actually got the money, she couldn't find any of her coworkers to share with, so she's Facebooking me almost crying, you know, about how excited she is that Stanley County got it. I want people to remember, we were one of three country, three counties in the entire nation. We're up there on par with massive research colleges and institutions getting this kinda money. That's just an astronomically awesome, awesome success. And she's never, she's not the kinda person to stand up and take me and pat on the back very well. She's not, more plack, and she's probably gonna go hide in her, her office tomorrow. But I just wanna say thanks to her. That was it. And all those that helped her, she's the name that I know, but there are a lot that helped, that helped her do what she, she did, and they're amazing people too, so thank you all for what you do, and please keep it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Barrett?
Ditto on Commissioner Jordan's remark there for Jennifer. Also like to congratulate Ms. Beard on her retirement. I know she's looking forward to that. Congratulations to her. And also the childhood cancer people that came out. I know one of those children very well, and it was well worth it seeing her out there. She's almost broke down in tears up here, so thank you all for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie.
Just have one quick comment. County Manager Lucas and I had the opportunity to run over to Kannapolis Thursday. I actually ended up being off work for the major hurricane that came through. So I wasn't gonna be able to go, and when they canceled our school in Montgomery County, I was, was able to attend, but it was the new State Director for Rural Development? Am I saying that right? The USDA Rural Development. And he was there with Senator Tillis, talking about rural development, and I really just wanted to bring it up. We were, we were talking about the USDA grants and things like that, that the county gets to expand water lines in our area, expand sewer, things like that, and low-interest loans, all of that. But what blew me away at this meeting was North Carolina is second only to Texas in the amount of rural development money that we get in the country. And in some years, we actually beat Texas. We haven't beat them in a couple years, I think he said, but in the past, it's, it's very close, within a few million dollars almost every year of rural development dollars that come to our state. And when you think about that, I think he said eighty, eighty-three or eighty-four of our one hundred counties are actually considered rural and eligible for this funding. So when we get these low-interest loans to, to help our county, it actually is a big benefit to the county. It saves a lot of money over the long run, so, but that's what I wanted to bring up. Any other comments? If not, I'll seek a motion to go into closed session for a personnel matter in accordance with General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one A six. A motion by Commissioner Morgan, a second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.